I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I know Julie and Don are, they mentioned they couldn't be here. Joe is, I think he must be on his way. So Craig will seat you as a regular member tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Bill, you want to walk us through the...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, let's review and hopefully approve the minutes of our July 11th, 2023 regular meeting. Any comments on first page?
Just line 17, absent. I was absent as well, so.
Yeah, okay.
Not a big deal, but.
So Amanda, please add Craig McCormack as absent on line 17. Anything else on page one? Lines 1 through 46. Page 2, lines 47 through 91.
So lines 52 through 54, I just thought that structure of that sentence was a little confusing, or I just, because I wasn't there, didn't, wasn't following the comments. So sorry, Mr. McGregor stated that that sentence doesn't read to me.
So Mr. McGregor stated that the draft condition to the zoning commission that says the applicant shall provide 10% of the units of land lot H as affordable. An affordability plan shall be provided at the time of site plan submission. So the discussion was around the affordable component of the application.
Okay.
And it was clarified that, I think the initial submittal had no, no affordable housing units.
Correct.
And that the applicant revised the submission to have 10%. So what's unclear about it, Craig?
An applicant shall provide 10%, word choice maybe, but if that's what was said, then that's, that's fine. I just.
It's the first sentence that's a little awkward, actually.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah. But if this is how it was said, that's fine.
Maybe, maybe what I said was that the draft condition offered to the zoning commission stated that the applicant shall provide. So essentially, the, the condition that was crafted was the applicant shall provide 10%.
Got it.
So I must have been reporting that that was how we drafted the condition for the zoning commission.
If it's clear to those that were here and that reflects accurately, then I'm all good with it.
Okay. I'm okay with it.
I'm okay.
Okay. Anything else on page 2? Hey, Marcus. Marcus.
I know, I was just gonna say, after you finish, I was like noted that we'll seat Marcus as a regular member as well.
Okay. Page 3, lines 92 through 137. Okay, all right. So I make a motion to accept the minutes of the July 1st, 2023 planning commission regular meeting as amended.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, so on to our P O C D.
Madam Chair, Glenn has drafted changes and provided you a hard copy document with draft P O C D changes dated August 1. And really, we tried to incorporate changes that you directed from the meetings that we have had, as well as kind of obvious changes that came out of the public meeting. In addition, we have received and sent to you a number of kind of later public comments, sustainability committee, open space committee, several individual members of the community. We've also provided those to you as well in advance. So those changes may have previously been included in here, some may have not, as we, as we hadn't discussed some of those items with you. So that kind of brings us to where we are, Glenn.
Okay, so we had the hard copies that we could pick up in the, in the Glenn Use Office, and that can be supplemented by the handout tonight?
Yeah. Can we put that, Glenn put that together on the overnight, essentially, to, if, if we wanted to go through and discuss individual comments, we would be prepared to do that. Or, you know, you could choose to, here, here, let me take a step back.
Yeah.
This is what we're working towards. We've got a public hearing that is, that we have already planned for October 24.
Mm-hmm.
Under the state statute, we have to, we are required for a 65-day public notice period, kind of a, and during that period, we don't make any changes to the draft. That is the draft that is put out to the public for their review to come to on the 24th with public comment. We back into that by needing to make that notice essentially the end of next week. So it's not a lot of time for additional comments to revise the draft necessarily.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean we can't make changes directed by you post-public hearing in, in October. We can still talk about them, but there are, there's just some sensitivities to time and effort at this point to make, to revise another draft.
That's what I would like to do.
So.
Because I, I think some of these are major changes, and so I, I want to be able to move forward with the public hearing. We've, you know, we've all discussed that. What I'd like to do is work through to see what we would want to change, that then we could change after the public hearing, if that makes sense.
And I think in the 65-day notice period, we could evaluate those comments and even be prepared, should they come up again at the public hearing? That's certainly an option. Following our meeting, we had our public meeting at the end of June, compiled all of those comments, we met in July, put those comments together. In addition, the committee, the commission asked me to reach out to the sustainability committee, because I, you may recall, Mark Scully at the public meeting got up and said they wanted to comment, and they'd give us their comments, you know, soon.
Mm-hmm.
I said to Mark at the meeting, you gotta get them to me really soon, because we're about to go to the next draft, and he did. And those were incorporated in here, and they're marked in red. They're basically the sustainability chapter. So I just wanted you to be aware that those were not in the July material prepared to the commission, but you asked me to get it. He did, and I thought it was complimentary and supportive of the plan, so I just wanted you to know.
So if we can go through this document to see what we want to put in or not, that would be great. So, all right.
Do we have to have a frozen document on file with like the Secretary of the State?
We have to have a frozen document.
That's next week.
End of next week.
Okay, so the motion here is saying that with changes directed on August 8.
You got a sample motion, we're not, we're not there yet, Holly.
Right.
Slow down a little bit.
But what I'm saying is...
You could ask us to incorporate changes, you could say, freeze it as, as the date, you can, so I just, I put one motion out, I don't want to do a whole bunch of different... We can figure out what the motion is.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, there's time to make changes tonight to be put into that document.
Very, very, very minor ones.
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be like wordsmith.
At all.
At all, yeah.
Okay.
I think we had calibrated the schedule based, and unfortunately, I'm going away on vacation as well, so the, the time period that's available is either, you know, we're close.
Okay.
So I took the document you circulated to suggest that the things we want to discuss tonight were the things that were highlighted, right? Yellow.
Right.
Well, I think to grade out things, with things that we had talked about previously as part of the prior report, but then we got the supplemental report from the open space committee that sometimes is identical, sometimes is changed a little bit. So rather than get into confusion on that, I presented both and grade out the comments we had already talked about with the suggested action, just again for your information.
All right, so.
So Erin, I, I don't know if I'm concerned or, or what here, but if we're talking about making, you know, significant changes after the frozen document, when, that would happen after the public hearing?
It would. I mean, you can, you can affect, you can affect changes of any scope after the public hearing based on that public comment.
Based on that, including?
We would include, we would include comments, we would, I, we'd introduce all public comments that we've received to get.
How would, you know, how would that look to the public if somebody's, you know, really interested in this? And they look at a document that was published August 14th, okay? We go to the October meeting, fully knowing that we're going to make significant changes, and we do it the day after the meeting. Wouldn't that look a little odd?
Well, no, because we can make changes after the public hearing. We did last time. We made changes. That, the problem with, you've got 14 pages from the open space, and that is another land use commission. I think.
14 pages of comments from the open space committee five days ago.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was like a week ago, I think.
Now a week ago.
Right. So they had a special meeting at the end of last month, and so one of the things that, there's no way we can incorporate all of these changes into this document if we still want to move toward the public hearing at the end of October, which we do. So I thought to save us time, instead of going through this, to, to see what things we might want to incorporate, and I think Glenn, you did that in some of this, and have suggested some changes and then discussed, and then we would park that for, because you, we're going to have to post any changes after the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, before adoption.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, there'll be a document that you'll approve ultimately, that'll have, that'll be the final document.
The way you may want to think about it is sort of an exhibit list. All right, so if we were headed for the public hearing, I would suggest that exhibit one is the draft that we have right here. This is the document headed for public hearing. Exhibit number two might be the submission from the sustainability committee, because that came in after our last meeting, the updated communication from the open space committee. That was based on a prior document prepared by Marjorie Winters, which was discussed at our meeting, so there's just, there's some repeats et cetera, but I would just say, submit the document as an exhibit. As pointed out by George, there were some private communications from people.
Yep.
And those are exhibits as well. And then we may get more exhibits over the next 65 days or so, et cetera, but we could now go into the public hearing, and the record, I believe, is transparent, that people can see these, and I said, I support comment number 57, or whatever they may do. But there's, there's no surprises to anybody.
Okay, as long as we're clear.
I agree.
That, you know, we're still contemplating changes, even though we're having the public hearing on a published document.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
It's a published draft, right?
Yeah.
It's a public draft, right.
Understood. But if I were sitting in the audience, I would say, why don't you take all those comments and, and put them in the draft?
Because they came late.
They came, right.
Why didn't you postpone the meeting?
That's up to you.
Why didn't the comments come in?
I mean, that's up to you, on how you want to do it.
The meeting was published for June, and we took comments up, up to a week in advance of our, the meeting that we had in July. So.
They're kind of expecting a change, yeah? Because it's, it is a draft, and that's kind of the point of our draft, is to, it's, it's not gonna be what we're seeing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Like, it's going to.
As long as we are transparent.
Just as people at the public hearing are going to.
About the, you know, the other, the other exhibits that, that exist, and we can explain that, you know, there was a timing issue.
Correct.
You know, not an issue, there was a timing element.
And we wanted to keep on our path.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Why don't I suggest?
Because if not.
I've got an idea. Why don't we do this? Why don't we start through the 24-page change document, or the comment document? You know, there may be stuff that says, put a period on, at page 22, and we can just, and we can make those, those, those minor changes before we, we head forward. So why don't we, why don't we go through that and see what's major change and what isn't?
Yes, right.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
I think that, that's what I'd like to do. Okay.
And I'll let Glenn kind of lead us through that.
Okay.
So I think just the color schemes in here, generally speaking, on these pages, the blue means that this was made, comment was made prior, and the change was made in the draft, but I'm not sure that the commenter had seen the revised draft, right?
Right.
So it's something that everybody to be aware of. The green is a comment that was made that sounds like a reasonable or a good change. I think it makes the document better, enhances, addresses some concerns. The red is no change. This change either was not recommended by Planometrics for your consideration, the commission talked about it and said, no, we're not gonna make that change. And then there's some Xs, which is this is a repeat of a prior action or whatever, and there's some highlighted for discuss, if you will.
Okay.
So on page 2, I think this was some commentary that had been provided, that I just wanted to, introductory comments, if you will, on some of the things that we received. The only thing is, an offer was made for pictures for the P O C D, and I think that's a, if we get pictures either at the public, I mean, I would say at the public hearing, right?
Yep.
Or suggested pictures, we can include those as part of our deliberations. So I don't think there's any changes that would be made in the document as a result of this page. This is more or less for your information. Ready to go to page 3?
Yep. Question. Erin, were you in present during the discussion with the open space committee?
Not the entire. I was, I was there for, so what happened was, they ended up, I was there for part of it. I gave them feedback on changes we didn't make, based on certain comments, so I was there for part, gave, you know, was there, and then I had to leave. They finished the discussion. I think they met for another, maybe half an hour, and then they compiled this document that was sent to us with comments, so they went through.
Get autographs. So I'm ready to go to page 3, if you are?
Yep.
Yep.
So I think the first two comments, I thought were subtle wording changes, but I thought they enhanced the paragraphs. I think the first big issue for discuss is number three on, on page 3. The suggestion is, is it in our document on page, get with me for a second? Page 6 of our current draft, you may recall, we embraced the concept of livability.
Uh-huh.
And we used the A R P diagram, which they have embraced as part of their use of the concept of livability. The comment generally was that people, some of the commenters didn't actually favor this diagram, because they felt that open space was, or natural resources were in a wrong place. So they asked us to change the diagram, and I think my comment to the commission at the last meeting last month was, it's not our diagram. We're embracing the A R P concept of livability. We're not making our own custom build. So I think the comments that were submitted back in, in June from Ms. Winters asked for that to be changed. The current comment says, okay, how about we get to a new logo for sustainability, which is this overlapping circles document, and we actually put, move sustainability before livability. So I think it's a desire for more of a focus on ecological issues. I don't think the order is tremendously critical in the, in our overarching principles. So I think, you know, some of the language here, I, I think if that's the submission of the commission is comfortable, I think the basic gist is, there's proposal to add two pages, one of which is shown here as comment number three. Replace the sustainability logo that we had been using, which was the black Simsbury with the green circle. They would like to replace that with sort of this three overlapping circle throughout the document, wherever that happens. And then also add another page, I believe as part of the sustainability concept, which is the text which is shown here on page 4, comment 6, and which includes the Simsbury 350th medallion.
Right.
So I think the addition of two pages actually solves a problem. Adding one page creates a pagination issue, but two pages, I think if the commission is comfortable with that, we can.
And this is to replace the A R P diagram?
No. That was originally their proposal, but I think if I read it correctly, what they're saying is the low, the A R P can stay, just put our discussion of sustainability in front of that, because they would like to explain that the concept of sustainability embraces all of these other things. So it's up to the commission how you'd like to proceed.
I'm fine with that. That makes sense to me.
I'm fine. I'm not even opposed to replacing the A R P, because they're trying to say the same thing in a different way with their own emphasis.
I think the A R P one was more, it's, it's broader.
Yeah.
It's, do you know what I mean? Like, I, I don't think I really want to replace the A R P one, but I'd be fine.
I'm just throwing that out there as, we've got now a rather long document.
Right, I know.
And we go on, we, we have quite a bit of philosophical discussion about.
I think we do, and I think the, the only observation I would like to make for your consideration is that, I think a lot of the comments that came in from the open space committee, the conclusion I sort of came to in my own mind, is that these comments came in through what I would call green-colored glasses.
Yeah.
And I think the issue that we're struggling with this part of the plan is this concept of balance between issues related, such as housing, such as economic development, and sometimes, you know, trees will get cut down to clear a site for how it's zoned for development. And to only take a green focus in the plan is not going to balance the needs of our community. So trying to find a way to get that balance, but I think that this comment or this approach here, by reordering the overarching principles, I think can try to set the stage and strengthen the conversation, the concept of balance.
What I like about it is that, having read all these pages today, it addresses a lot of the issues that come.
Let me just say, I think, I'm impressed, because I think the only one who's retired here is Bill, you know. Someone else read it, but, Bill, did you read it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I just think by putting this in there, it addresses a whole lot of the other comments that.
Yeah.
Came up.
But I did, you know, I did get the same flavor, Glenn, that, that you did. When I read Marjorie's, or, okay, the open space committee's comments.
Yeah, it's not Marjorie's, it's really.
It's the committee's, right. It was very much leaning towards the open space agenda. Now, I'm not sure if they did that, because they're not getting any traction with their committee, but I, I want to avoid turning the P O C D into an open space document.
Exclusively.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's broader than that.
But I don't think putting these two pages in is going to do that.
I don't think so, no.
No.
But I think it will give them a chance to explain how, how important they think these, or how, well, how important we all feel these values are, you know? I think it covers a whole lot of the ensuing comments, because it's in there now.
So Glenn and George, if we look at the, the third comment on page 3 of your, it says, add a new page before livability, right? Would we call it the power of co-benefits? Is that the proposal?
Yeah, yep.
Um, I think that my sense was.
See, I don't, I mean, so I read that, and I, you know, the power of co-benefit sounds like a branded statement.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know how it reflects with the rest of the paragraphs, actually, so I.
Well, I think it, it just, you know, goes with the Venn diagram. That, that's, that's the.
I guess so.
Coexistence, right? And the, the intersection of all three is supposedly the sweet spot. But I don't know if it's talking about, what is it talking about? Sustainability or?
And did they review this with the sustainability committee before writing all this?
I'm not sure.
We're not aware of that.
And I'm certainly unaware of that, as the liaison.
I just, I don't know what the, what the proposed overarching concept is.
As I looked at, looking again on page 3, number 3, the, the second paragraph starts off with the concept of sustainability. Talks about, in comment number 4, replacing the sustainability icon throughout the P O C D with the overlapping circles. So I felt that this was really a sustainability comment. I think I would look at this title of the power of co-benefits, and I'm not sure that's the leadoff overarching principle. I don't know if we need that statement.
I wonder.
I don't think you do.
No.
But I thought the best way to embrace what, what the suggestion here, which was being considered, which was sort of more of a focus on sustainability, don't lead with livability. The concept in our comments previously is, if, if the community doesn't consider the overall ecology, then it's not livable. Okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue about it, but I think we can address the issue by putting sustainability first, then livability, and then diversity. So I think, I think we can make it work, and if, if they don't like it, I'm sure we'll hear about it on October 24.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not clear.
And even though this hasn't been, I don't think this has been vetted by sustainability, it falls in with all their principles.
I think it could be okay.
I'm not, I'm really not sure what they're asking to do. Are they asking to add another overarching principle? Or are they asking, because, you know, the, the request is to add a page before livability.
So that it stood out.
But livability was the first overarching principle.
Right.
And they say, add a page before that. Now, the page before that is our mission statement. Now, if they just want to have a page of commentary, or is it intended to be another overarching principle?
So I think, my sense, Bill, after reading multiple times, was that these are elements related to their concept of sustainability. So my thought was, take the sustainability text, move it up, enhance it with this, or modify it with this, then go to livability. So it's, 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 I didn't have any grand priority in my mind when I put livability in before D E I, which, or before sustainability. I thought they were all important.
Yeah.
So if, if somebody says, we'll try a different order, the commission's comfortable with it, and I think I, I feel like I have some liberty to massage some language to, to make it all work together. I think we end up with a good solution.
Yep.
So then number 6, which is on page 4 of your consolidated comments. The, the request is to add a new page after livability.
Right.
But before sustainability.
So I think I'd merge it with sustainability. This is what they said in their comment, but I think my solution or my suggestion for your consideration is, we're not going to break this up into sort of multiple pieces. It's going to be maybe two to three pages of sustainability, then livability, then.
Right, yeah. So I, I don't see, I don't see where it fits, though. It, it's just commentary. It's not, it's not, you know.
I disagree. I mean, the commission can say to me, you know, these changes today. They can edit it and bring it back in October. It's, it's, I think.
I personally don't see the value of adding number 6.
Oh, it's number 6. Okay, sorry. Well, they do talk about preserving and enhancing.
They have plenty of that.
And we certainly say that.
We do.
Throughout the document.
Yeah, is it additive or is it repetitive?
I think it's repetitive.
I have to agree with Bill on this, whereas on number 3, it does fit.
Yeah.
Three fits, and it actually fits in with, it's a nice little picture to highlight some of the things you already put in on page 8. I, I do, I do see that 6 is really redundant. We've said this over and over.
Yeah, all right.
No, they, they presented it very nicely, but I think we already have it covered.
Yeah.
I do like the medallion, though. I wish there was someplace to put that in.
Yeah.
Well, my thought process, again, was, you may recall, at places in the plan, we've inserted these sort of blue boxes, which are to, a little bit of a detour to explain something or present something. And I think the 350th anniversary, et cetera, or, you know, 350.
Yep.
Is kind of, a lot of communities in Connecticut, you know, so I, I thought that we could put this into a blue box and just kind of celebrate our, bit of our history.
And that's your suggestion, the blue box approach?
I, I think the blue box, because it's not.
Yeah, that's nice.
The medallion is not germane to the concept of sustainability.
No, I agree.
Right.
But I think it's an interesting addition to the conversation.
Yeah.
All right. That's a good solution. That's a very good solution.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
Five.
Yeah, we did that already.
All right, I'll sit.
Change, change, change.
Number 7 needs to be discussed.
Seven, yep.
Page 15.
I, I kind of like this, because we get deemed a whole lot, and yet we're not the total Neanderthals that everyone thinks we are about affordable housing. Simsbury has some pride, you know? I still wanted to put something in about NOAA's, but I haven't been able to find anything on that.
Suddenly put in about what?
NOAA's, naturally occurring affordable housing, because it's, it's a significant portion of the existing housing stock.
So number, number 6 on page 5, what pa, is that, oh, page 15?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Now, this is a very poorly worded sentence the first time it came through. There was a comment that came through in the earlier public comments of a way to fix it, and then the comment came in with a different way to fix it. Either way, I think we already fixed it, so.
I didn't see it, though, Glenn.
Yeah, so.
Page 15?
Page 15, top, red text, it says.
The first sentence, I think, is what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, that's the change.
The advantages of European.
Advances.
Advances.
We're not welcome, but I, I think the original language.
Oh, I got, so they want it, that's what they want it taken out. The advantages of European.
Advances.
Advances.
Were not welcome, but I think the original language.
Oh, I got, so they wanted, that's what they wanted taken out, fought against, okay.
You can get deep into the weeds on this.
Yep, yep, yep.
I think it's fine.
Is there a reason why we follow up Native American with Indian attack? Are those counter, are those conflicting terms?
On page fifteen?
Yes.
I think that's an excellent point. Good catch, Marcus. I think it's, we should use the.
Again, that's the old, that's, remember, that's the old language from the original P O C D. You just didn't make that change.
It's been carried through.
Learned something in the last.
From the 2017 one, which, yeah, that's.
So on.
Good eye.
On fifteen.
You're a good man.
So now they, they want to add this, the industries, they want to add a paragraph four.
So I think this comment was from Mrs. Peterson, I think, comment number seven.
Yeah, that's from the Open Space.
Yeah, so my sense in it is I wouldn't, I'm not a big fan of this change. I think the idea is this is the history of Simsbury, the history of settlement. There's some statements in here about housing from then to now, about an inclusive, equitable, and welcoming community that I'm not, I'm not really sure that the data fully supports. And I didn't think it was relevant to what we're trying to accomplish here. If we're going to put this text in the plan, it really probably needs to be in the housing section.
Yes.
This is really a description of history here.
But I also don't think it's, I mean, here introduces the 2021 housing plan. I mean, that's not a material part of how Simsbury got to 2020, so.
All right.
My suggestion here was no change on this page. Agreed.
I like the idea of putting it in the housing section.
I do, too.
Yep, can we do that as a blue, like, listen?
I'd be, I'd be careful.
About the assumptions made.
I know. I, I, when I read that, I was like, mm.
So the note I'm writing to myself, see if I can put it into the housing section. I do think we did have examples in Simsbury of company housing, which was a different housing model, and it was part of our history.
I think that's in the draft you've made.
I understand. But if I can supplement that with some of the wording from here to honor the fact that we, Simsbury has been creative over the years. So see if we can.
Yeah, I would just be cautious because of the follow-on history with company housing, which ended up not being too good. You know, people were indebted to the company. They couldn't buy their way out of it, so.
Are you saying this would happen here?
I don't know that for sure, Holly.
Let me, I understand the general concerns. Let's, let's move on.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And again, the next version of the plan will come through with two versions, a red line and the black line. The black line is a copy that's going to get posted so that the general public, et cetera, who are not familiar with the work that we've been doing, will be able to see the document in the way it's meant to be seen in the future. And then for the members of the commission and other people who requested, there will be the red line document as this version is. It says, oh, okay, Indian was changed to Native American, or something else. Be able, so everything in this document will go to black, and then the changes will now go into red. So it'll be iterative.
Okay.
Good. I'm ready to go to page six, if you are.
So can I ask number nine? Oh, it's already, did we, you added preserved to the?
No, that's what the Open Space Committee recommended.
What, okay, so.
Existing parcels could be redeveloped or preserved for new uses. And the point that we're trying to make here is that existing developed parcels could be redeveloped.
Gotcha.
Okay, but I think that that change is, clarifies the sense. So I think we make that, but, you know, yes, I guess it's possible that existing developed parcels could be preserved. But I think the point that we're trying to make here is that parcels, we don't, we don't just have vacant land in town. We have existing developed parcels that can be redeveloped for new uses in the future, much like Hunter Insurance Group property.
Yeah. Twenty-one, so we're not doing developable. Okay, same thing with number 10.
Yeah.
Yep.
Page twenty-seven.
I think number 11 is an accurate observation. I'm not sure it needs to, I think.
I think we're not making any change, right?
Yeah, I'm not saying we need to change it. It was pretty obvious at night that was.
So.
Thirteen.
Number 12, it was.
Yeah, we already talked about these. So I think if we go through each of these line by line, we're going to be here quite sometime. So unless there's a, I think, a compelling reason why we want to get back into a gray again.
Remember, that blue box means we've made the change already.
Yeah, they're, okay. I'm just, okay, yep, go ahead, 13. All set.
So I think that this page 27 is a page where we talk about the P O C D approach. And we identify the concept of overarching principles. I think they've suggested here some different titling and organization. And not sure that we should organize them this way. But I think the concept of sustainability that we had talked about earlier, kind of merging that together and move that up above livability. And I don't think open space and ecological systems is a fair overarching principle of our plan.
Right, see, if we look back to number six, okay, on page four of the, it's clear to me now that the intent was that open space and ecological systems be a new overarching principle.
How do you feel about that?
Well, it says, because they also suggested we add the words and values. So number one, identify the following overarching principles and values in the 2023 P O C D. So maybe this is a conservative value?
I think there's a couple of places where they suggested that, some of the commentary, if you get into detail on it, takes the word ambiance as being sort of a shallow issue for our community. You may recall in years past, the plan talked quite a bit, and Simsbury historically has talked quite a bit about the concept of character, the physical appearance of our community and how important that is to us. Character in Connecticut state law these days is a four-letter word. Not supposed to use it anymore. So the surrogate that we chose was ambiance. But now the feeling is that that's, you know, sort of a lightweight term or whatever, and it dismisses some of the ecological values of some of our important resources. But again, it's trying to honor, if you will, our history that people really care about the community and its appearance. And there's many elements. It's not meant to demean any resources specifically. It's meant to identify the fact that maybe people view the community on its surface. It's most important to people. It came through in the online survey as well.
And I think that for a number of people, myself included, ecological resources is part of the ambiance.
Agreed.
Of the town. So I don't see that we need to add that specifically.
I think people are reacting to ambiance as being a fluffy word or.
So you're saying, don't add the open space.
I resent that we have to change our wording because a few people got their panties in a twist. But still, it is what it is.
So Holly, are you saying, don't put in a, as they suggested, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
See that we need to change it.
Page seven. So in comment number 14, there's really sort of two paragraphs here. The first of which is some tweaking, if you will, about natural resources being a barometer of ecological health and some tweaks in there. I think those enhance the paragraph, so I suggested make change. And then there started to be some listing of different types of programs or resources related to some of these. The suggestion was, well, you're going to run a space on this page because there's, if you see here, there's four pictures. So they said drop some pictures, or make them smaller, or whatever, and put that other paragraph in. And I wasn't sure about that. I thought perhaps maybe that change wasn't necessary or desirable. Certainly don't want to split it all up, but what's the commission's thought on that?
Kind of like that.
I kind of like that.
Do we want to add more pictures?
The, the second part of that, George?
Oh, I mean, I think the pictures are.
Yeah.
I can make the pictures smaller. I can, I can crop, so I can get the first paragraph and not, it's actually tweaks to the existing paragraph. So those tweaks are easy.
Yeah.
The underlying terminology, it's the whole next paragraph. And again, it's up to the commission what you'd like to do there.
I don't have a problem with adding it.
I mean, it was added for the draft.
The whole thing, both paragraphs?
Can you add another side?
Well, no, the first paragraph is in there. They're just talking about making the under, the changes.
Underline part.
So that's already, that's already in there.
Okay.
It's adding that second.
And then 15 and 16, again, there's some tweaks here on the sidebar. They're, they're kind of wordy, but I think we probably have enough space here for these, so.
Are we going to do 14 or no? Would it?
I think I got the sense from my, some nodding heads along the way, if you will, that both paragraph, tweak the first paragraph in 14 and add the second was the direction of the commission. Okay. Comment number 15, again, this is sidebar as is number, actually, 16 is for the next page. So I'm okay with that, if you are.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, we go back to, okay, 15, replace the existing sidebar.
Sidebar text.
Says that little bit there.
So you may recall that based on the comments we received previously, this chapter was protect natural resources. The request was made to change the name of the paragraph to protect, the section, excuse me, protect natural resources and enhance ecological health. That change was made. Now, this sidebar addition here replaces the text here under sustainability about protecting natural resources will help Simsbury be more ecologically sustainable with some additional discussion about sustainability. Here comes the star, the cover of the new plan.
But you've had fun with this. Number 16 you're talking about?
We're talking 15.
Number 15.
We're going to fit all of this on the sidebar.
I think it'll fit there.
I'll edit it.
Right there, instead of.
Because I said earlier, I reserve the right to edit to fit.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Make change, make change, okay.
Okay.
And then the same thing on 16. Any worries? The comments we received were really not in favor of the online survey that was done and some of the findings from the online survey and some of the findings from the community discussion meeting that we had. The request was that those comments or statements be deleted. I wasn't really comfortable with that. I mean, this is sort of what the community said. But I think we want to be sensitive to some of these issues here. So I think that rather than the sort of detailed percentage of the different rankings, I think the comment here is just say that in the 22 online survey, natural resources, open space, and visual appearance were all rated highly. I think, I think that's mine.
Really make a change there. Gotcha.
So I didn't have. How much detail do you want to go in on these? I thought 17 was a lot of commentary on policies that weren't directly related to protecting natural resources or water resources, et cetera. And some of the additional paragraphs under land resources, air resources, and biological resources. So I marked each of those as no change. It's up to the commission. I think there was, page 32.
So we're on to page nine of Glenn's.
I'm on the bottom of page eight. You have the last comment on the bottom of page eight. In the sidebar on page 32, the text here at the present time says, healthy playing communities are a function of, there's a bulleted list. And at the bottom was a statement that said land management by humans are a fact. The request is that that be deleted because it's overstated and easily misinterpreted.
Who else is going to manage land, besides humans?
I can get goats to eat the kudzu.
I could.
So leave in land management by humans or take it out?
Yeah, no, I'm in favor of leaving it.
So we're leaving that in.
So I think there's a number of, yeah, on page 32, top of page nine, comment 25, request to add in all of this sidebar text. There's simply not enough room. So currently, the sidebar expanded based on the prior comments we received to include. And there's just, there's not enough room. So I think if, when we get to the public hearing in October, if somebody wants to give us a concise bit of text that will fit there, whatever they'd like to say, I think we could consider that.
Okay, so, all right.
I mean, do we have room as is? Because we still have, it's full now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Marcus, is that it's pretty, it's, we're fighting the margins right now. And so I got to take something out, and why'd you take that out? So I think the idea here is that sidebars, there's some pages that, you know, there's, there's extra space and some pages that there's not. So we just got to maneuver with the space we've got. I'm ready to jump to comment 30, if you are.
Sure.
Page 34, so the current plan right now, you may recall that we had a policy, if a property will be developed, encourage open space development. Where such development will still preserve important resources. Now, open space development is a development approach that roughly half of the parcel gets preserved as open space. And it's much more flexible in terms of how the lots get left out. But I think the phrase open space development concerned people. So in the drafts which you've received before you for tonight's meeting, I had modified that and called it conservation development patterns and added a definition back in the glossary that explains what we mean by this so that people would see it. But I still think there's a scenario that, you know, people are concerned about sort of that provision. I do think that conservation development or open space development patterns are ways to preserve natural resources, protect open space. That's the reason to do it. The land's going to get developed anyway. But if we can do it in a way to preserve more resources, that's better. So the solution, or the recommendation or strategy that was made is, well, just take that out. And my sense is, I would advocate for you to leave it in. If land is going to be developed, the more open space and natural resources that can be preserved, rather than sort of a cookie cutter subdivision or something else, might not actually produce the best outcome in terms of important resources.
What number are you talking, Glenn?
Number 30.
Thirty?
Okay.
Which is a.
Frankly, we, you know, we operate a policy and a pattern of conservation development. We have open space requirements. We, we protect our water courses. And those are, you know, when somebody comes in with a development, they're supposed to protect, I mean, that's the definition of conservation development. Protect the sensitive places first, and then, and then build outside of that. So we should keep that, I would say.
The only thing that I took from that question, or the comment 30, that might be considered added is that the very, the last, the H, the very end there, important natural resources, they included the word natural in their comment. I don't know if it's additive to add the word natural?
An H at the end of the sentence?
Yeah, I mean, important resources, I, it could be, it could be open space. I mean, it could be scenic views, it could be.
Yeah, it might not just be natural.
Okay, and I think the funny thing is that, I think one of the wonders of a conservation development approach is that it recognizes the unique attributes of each parcel. Doesn't, it's not a rule of one size fits all. The issue is we look at the parcel, look at its resources, and develop an approach which preserves what's important, but also allows some development. And it could be different than the parcel next door, but they're each unique and relevant to that parcel. There were some suggested edits to different leaders and partners throughout the document. Tried to be very careful about who we were identifying as being responsible. So ideas about adding the Farmington River Watershed Association in, I didn't include. I think they're a very important organization. I think they can or should be called in, but I didn't feel like we should be calling them out and naming them in the plan. I think many of these strategies fall to the Conservation Commission to do the implementation. They can call in as many people and groups as they want to. But I don't think the plan has to be litany of. has to be a litany of acronyms, if you will, for people. I think the most important entity for any P O C D strategy is gonna be the leader, and many of these fall to the Conservation Commission.
So there was...
So I think the next big one I wanted to bring your attention was number thirty-seven on page ten, and this is the proposal on page thirty-four to add a number of action steps, and I'm not sure, we're, again, we're facing a space issue. Either we're gonna have to add one or two pages for pagination, but I felt that many of these were already recognized in the document already, sometimes in the natural resources section, sometime, excuse me, the ambiance section, and some of them had already sort of been included as part of this. So I, I thought overall we were recognizing their comments, but this wasn't always the right place for those. There's some comments about... So comment number thirty-eight, for example, is about on page thirty-five, adding sidebar comments with text that in the open space section start going back to the natural resources section, so I think what I tried to do is put natural resources and natural features in the, the natural resources section, and then open space in the open space section, so I noted thirty-eight is no change.
Because it's elsewhere, is that what you're...
I, I think that, again, we'll get to comments later, for example, that even the ambiance section have significant additions related to invasive species. Talk about invasive species in the natural resources section, so it's not that we should be putting invasive species in every chapter of the plan, anytime the word "tree" comes up, we shouldn't necessarily start to add all of that, so I think if we can, I realize the interrelatedness of a lot of these topics, but if the commission or any commission late at night has to look at the P O C D to find what they're looking for, I think the more logical place to think about finding it could be in the natural resources section.
Okay.
So unless something jumped out at the commission... I'm jumping up to page twelve unless you guys have something between. Either mark these as no change or the change was already made.
There's something about deleting the last bullet on thirty-six about disposing of small parcels.
Yeah, that change, we already made that.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, don't forget. I think if you go to that section, we had a sidebar in at one point in time, and this may, you may recall, came from one of the affordable housing meetings at the libraries quite some time ago, that Simsbury's historic way to, to advocate for open space preservation is that it'll stop housing growth, and in fact, housing is a significant issue today, and housing needs to be addressed. So we had incorporated that into the chapter and then realized when we looked at it, people reacted strongly to it. It's like, hang on a second here, we almost appeared to set up a conflict on those issues, and the issue is, no, we don't want to pick a fight on that particular issue. We moved that conversation over to the housing section, under the concept that perhaps the town might have land which could help address the housing situation. So, the open space chapter was not the right place for that, and so we moved there.
I, I've lost which, which number we're on.
So we're on page twelve?
Right, I've got that.
Okay, Aaron went back to something.
Yeah, we're down to a new number.
So, pay, comment number fifty-one, page thirty-six. There's a sidebar here that talks about it, the community meeting held, that was one of Henry James', that one of the comments, the second to last bullet in the sidebar, said Simsbury should discontinue the practice of blindly acquiring open space as part of a residential subdivision if it doesn't add anything to the community. Comment made at the meeting wasn't favored, so the request was to eliminate that.
Eliminate that comment at the public meeting?
Well, it doesn't have to be in the P O C D, and it was, it was stated at the meeting, it's in my notes, but...
Yeah, I mean, remember, that's the sidebar that has comments from the public, that's the point that we were...
Right, right.
We were sharing or transmitting some of those comments.
Right. I would, I would be in favor of eliminating the comment. I mean, you know.
Yeah. I think it's a valid comment.
Could we soften the language, perhaps? Could we soften it a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, does it represent that what the comment was made?
Well, no, that's the point, it was, that was the comment.
That's what it says. I mean, if it's public comments, that's the comment.
It is, but there, there are other comments that were made at the meeting, it wasn't a verbatim transcript.
Right.
So I, I think we do have some editorial discretion as part of this. I think the, whoever made that comment clearly was speaking with some passion. Some people look at this and say, "What do you mean, open space doesn't add anything to the community?" Open space always adds something to the community. Yet other people might say, "If we're gonna try to create an open space system of interconnected greenways and connectivity, individual small parcel of open space may not add to that vision." So there's a disagreement. Some people say, "Open space anywhere," and other people say, "Let's have open space that creates something." So, again, these, these are probably going to be issues which are gonna evolve for, for years and decades to come, but certainly this is a comment that was raised that we can, I, I think we can take it out if the commission, that's the commission's pleasure.
If it wasn't verbatim, I mean, I, I understand that it's, I would say, but I'm not sure we need to replace it with, we already do that, isn't that fee and lieu of elsewhere in the plan?
Yeah, and that, I would not add...
You don't wanna repl, I wouldn't replace it.
Right, I wouldn't, that's what I'm thinking, I wouldn't replace it, so.
Right, because that's not what was said at the meeting, so I think...
I would repl, I would put in what was said at the meeting.
I agree with Bill, I think it, it's important, there are some strong positions, either way, this is strong, perhaps offensive to some, but I mean, not offensive, I don't know.
But there's, we, there's other strong comments that we don't put in, so why are we putting this one in? Do you know, I mean, that's...
Did we purposely choose to eliminate another strong comment?
No, no, but I mean, there are other strong comments that were made that we didn't, that didn't get put in the draft.
But I, I mean, I think what Glenn was trying to do in that, again, it's a sidebar that was trying to describe series of, a series of comments, there's no theme there, they're actually on diff, you know, from different perspectives, and there are different sides of the issue perhaps, or, so it's, it's a, you know, it's a, you know, it's a random selection of those comments, that's, so that, this is what, hey, this is, this is what happened at the pub, at the public meeting, people said this kind of thing, these kinds of things about open space. That's really what that, that, that section is trying to do.
So I don't have a sense yet of consensus, it seems evenly split, keep or take it out? I think...
So, Bill, you've, you've actually brought this point up yourself several times. Do you feel that we should put this in here because we don't address this anywhere else in the plan?
I think we do have it addressed elsewhere, I think.
So, what value...
Yeah, I just don't see the value, like, I don't know.
Well, no, it's a, yeah, I, I think it's a viable comment. I think it's something the town should, you know, I, I think the, the person who said it had a, had some value in saying it.
Does that mean we should include all the comments that were issued? So, again, I go back to, if this, if there is, if this ruffles feathers on the open space committee, what is the value of putting it in? If we've already addressed the issue.
I'm not gonna take it out just because someone doesn't agree with it.
I guess what I'm saying is, if this was like one of our major points that we were making, like this is an action item, or, or, or policy, or, then we wouldn't take it out just because someone didn't like it unless there was some reason for that, but this is a sidebar of saying, here's a, a list of some things that people said, and I think open space feels that that's, I don't know.
Remember what we were trying to do, that we, we were pulling out select comments that paint a picture of, of varied interests on the open spaces. And this is not even suggesting that it's anti-open space, it's just saying we should be careful about, this person was saying we should be careful about the open space that we, that we accept and we, and we...
I mean, I actually agree with your opinion on this.
That's all they're saying.
The comment before, that's talking about, that's, that's more pro-open space, I would say.
Which one?
The comment before, that.
Oh, yeah.
So...
Got a variety of comments.
Yeah, that's, I think that's, that, that kinda helps, because I don't wanna have a, a whole list of glowing positive things, if someone doesn't like this, and we have both sides of it, the one before saying, "We like it and we wanna continue open space, we have something after," someone clearly doesn't like all the purchase. Sidebar reflects a, a diversity of, of opinion and thought. Some of them express me a little more strongly, but that's not, there's nothing wrong with that.
All right, so I'm leaning now to just, we're gonna leave it in to the public hearing and see what happens in terms of additional comments. Got it?
Sure.
I'm ready for comment fifty-three. The, I believe Georgia's staff was asked to put together an estimate of the amount of open space in town, so from the G I S, they were able to get these acre estimates. The comment was made, hey, include this in the plan, in the P O C D. I think that we can, and the only caveat that I would wanna put with this is that the land use update was not as deeply researched as we might normally do for budgetary reasons, so as long as we say that this is an approximation, I think we're good.
Yeah, why don't we round off the acreage numbers, let's drop the two decimal points.
God, man, that was a one-part fill, I was really attached to it.
We were being precise, Bill.
You were being precise, but maybe not accurate.
We're talking fifty-three.
These numbers are, these numbers are precise, but...
He may be retired, but he's still an engineer.
Approximate's a good word. Approximate's the right word.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't have two decimal points and say it's approximate.
I would agree with that.
Yes, maybe we just go with rough percentages, how about that? Got it.
Must be an engineer.
Yeah.
Thirteen? We're good there?
Again, I, I think, I don't wanna talk through every comment, so I think at this time, I'm moving ahead quite a ways, unless there's anything in the interim. A number of these, again, the changes were already made, there's quite a bit of blue in the columns which says, "Based on prior comments, we already did this," so you're asking us again to do the thing we already did.
I had a hard time following how comment sixty-three fit in on page forty-two. Sixty, comment sixty-three.
Yep.
I just...
Yeah, so on, yeah, page forty-two, thank you. So here under...
So it's, so it's in the, it's in the action step section, right?
Policies, I may have the page number wrong there.
Yeah, I think the page...
I apologize.
What do you think?
Yeah, because those are policies and action steps, so I think I, I did, I apologize.
It's page forty, I think, now?
It's page forty, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Page forty.
Okay.
So the, the letter designations, A, C, D, E are policies numbered, are action steps. So that's, again, I apologize for adding any confusion.
No problem.
So no change on forty?
I, I didn't... I think there's some history on each of these, and I think that the policy might be green-colored glasses again.
Well, A says, "Implement the recommendations of the open space master plan," so that seems to cover a lot of these specifics that we don't need to rewrite the plan.
I think there's some hurt feelings because the park and open space master plan ended up being the, mostly the parks plan, not the open space plan. It was run by Culture Parks and REC, and so the feeling was, the things that open space committee members wanted in the plan didn't get in the plan, so now they want the P O C D to recommend these in the P O C D. And, that's...
Wait, the open space committee was not responsible for the open space master plan?
They, they, well, there were many entities involved.
Okay.
So, but I think that the, the, the open space committee can advocate for this plan, this work. So, I, I was hesitant about reopening an old wound, if you will, on this particular topic, I wasn't sure what the right thing to do was.
Isn't it better for us to stay in our swim lane because we're saying, let the responsible bodies create these plans and...
Yep. And I think that...
Are we supposed to be telling the people who create the plan that we know better than they?
No, I think that there are elements, comments that were made in here about enhancing the open space planning for Simsbury that ended up in here as changes already made, so I, I think adding some of these edits in here, I wasn't...
I think Holly's agreeing with the...
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with your, your no change.
What you recommended, yeah, so we're good.
Yeah.
Next.
I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, that was already done.
So I think, I, I just, I wanted to speak briefly about comment seventy-one, anybody have anything else before that?
Nope.
This is a simple wording change here, if you will, that I, I think the language that I had in the plan on page forty-four was pretty stilted, it didn't really work well, so I think it was great comment here about how to word that better.
And we don't wanna, in sixty-nine, we don't wanna add values?
Um, it's up to the commission, I, I think, I struggled with that as I was thinking it through because the phraseology is maintain and enhance, and so if you were to take out the word community ambiance, it's maintain and enhance values. It was like, hang on a second, what is, what is that supposed to mean? So I, I, I think the issue is maintain and enhance the appearance and character of the community, the values, I mean, I think they're implicit sort of throughout the plan, but I wasn't sure what to do with that.
No change.
Page, page fifteen, number sixty-nine.
Page fifteen?
I think we're going to page sixteen now. So comment, there were some comments here on about page forty-five sidebar, there's simply is not enough space, we already incorporated, this is like the concept before, that we already made changes that were requested, and now there's really not much more room, so if, if somebody can give us a balance, if you will, of what'll fit there...
I'm sorry, which comment were you looking at?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
All right, thank you, John.
Yep.
I mean, we, we added it, we added a, a whole section on, on dark skies, right?
Yeah, we got a sidebar on page forty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think they, it looked like they wanted to add to that, but I think...
There's a lot of specifics in here that...
Yeah.
Yeah, you want, you don't wanna have specifics, if, 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 the zoning commissioner or whoever chooses to implement that, but specifics will come out during that process.
Right.
And they may change, so.
Right.
Yep.
Is there any made? Got some minor wording suggestions here and changes, or I said make change. Page seventeen, I think there's some statements in here about ways to reword things that I, I didn't think based on prior conversations with the commission were the direction that you had given us for the P O C D, and then a number of the other changes on this page, again, the changes were already made based on the draft comments which came in back in June. Let me just say for the record, too, that if, if people, my comments came late, right? Because they came in last week, et cetera. If people disagree with my assessment, I, I think they can speak up at the public hearing and say, "I don't agree, and I think we should do that," I think that's okay. I'm up to page eighteen. I'm up to page eighteen. So comment number ninety-two here, I wasn't quite sure if I could actually bring myself to type Beaver Deceivers into the POCD.
Any idea what that is?
I'm sorry, which number are we on?
Page ninety-two.
Good, page eighteen, item ninety-two.
Beaver Deceivers.
I'm going to hit Google.
Oh, there you go.
Fifty-six.
But most of these comment, most of these changes with regard to protection of ridge lines, for example, were included into the prior draft, preserving large existing trees is in the current draft, and then the concept of an arboretum at Schultz Park and the Beaver Deceiver was, was not incorporated.
I'm trying to understand how this gets worked in, and is it in this action step section?
Mm-hmm.
That's what they say. Add beaver ponds with Beaver Deceiver.
So on page fifty-six.
Yep, I'm looking at it.
They want to add additional action steps here.
Oh, these are additional, okay, yep, yep.
So I'm up to page nineteen now, if you guys are.
What did we decide on ninety-two not to add?
Ninety-two.
You'd make some of those.
I think the first two is already in this draft, in other words, those comments came in, you'll notice on page fifty-six that action step three and four address those issues about preserving existing trees, native tree species, and then the Public Act ninety-five two thirty-nine related to protection of ridge lines.
Yeah, there, yeah. Where's the? Uh, wait, this one is right there, four.
No, I see the, I see number four as the first one on here, where's the tree?
That's three.
Oh, sorry, okay, and then the other two aren't in there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Looks like some sort of protective infrastructure. Okay. You're pretty sharp though. So on page nineteen, I, it looks like I put make change for comment ninety-five, and that's not what I intended to say here, this is one of these comments, again, they're asking that the comment made by the public be deleted. So on page eighty-seven in the sidebar, this is a community discussion about housing, and the comment that came up at the meeting, you may recall, was, could we find locations to provide for affordable housing, such as converting small open space areas at the end of cul-de-sacs? I don't know if you remember that comment from the public meeting, it was in the plan, and the request was made to delete that statement and replace it with the green text.
And ninety-five, okay, and you want to replace six with, what is it, the low hanging fruit?
That's what their suggestion was, but I, I don't.
It's vague.
I would not want to.
Yeah, I.
If the commission directed me to take out, as Marcus had said earlier, we've got a diversity of comments in there, to take it out, I will do so, on the other hand, to replace it with something that nobody said is not.
Remember, it was a comment from a community discussion.
Correct.
We should leave it.
So again, I just incorrectly titled that as make change, so that should actually read no change. I think there were comments in here about West Simsbury Center, a moratorium on new residential developments, and I think, as Holly said, maybe that's, that's not in that, that particular lane. When you're ready, we can go to page twenty. So there's a number of comments that came in from the Sustainability Committee, I read those through in terms of our sustainability objectives, I think, again, I've said before, I think the Sustainability Committee, we're very fortunate to have a group that does quite a bit in this regard, so I incorporated many of the comments from the Sustainability Committee, which is why the, the rows say change already made.
I just want to add a couple, just two, two sentences. First of all, thank you very much, Glenn, as, as the liaison to the Sustainability Committee, I was very impressed that you put almost everything they asked for in there.
Well, I can take some things out if you'd like.
Well, no, 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 but they, but as you, as you know this group, we did hold a meeting to discuss the, that, they went online and saw it, and said, hey, there's a couple of things we suggested that didn't get in there, and then we discussed why it might not have gotten in there. So there had been put in as a requirement, as a request, embed sustainability goals in zoning regulations and establish a process of reviewing new building developments in town to encourage conformity, which was actually, interestingly enough, something that came from John Hampton originally, that got into the Sustainability Committee. And then we discussed that, well, we can't embed sustainability goals in zoning regulations until we've established what those are. So, and that's probably why I didn't get in, so the question is, to move it to say, draft sustainability goals to be embedded in zoning regulations, would that be, and have the open?
Yeah, well, I get a little nervous and hesitant in this scenario, because the, we, each, the Planning Commission has independent statutory authority, the Zoning Commission has independent statutory authority, the Sustainability doesn't actually have clear statutory authority.
Okay.
So we're playing a little bit, and if I said to you, mow your grass, and you said, I'm not ready to mow it until Tuesday, next week, or something, so I think that the concept of sustainability needs to start making the transition to our regulatory approaches, but the statutory authority to do things like that isn't abundantly clear just yet. So it seemed a little edgy for me, and I was, again, worried about staying in our lane, and I, I think there's a lot of things that we need to work with the Zoning Commission on, and whatever the commission would like to do, just, just let me know.
And, you know, if you look at the, if you look at one oh, one oh two, where we talked about the policy and ongoing programs, we are recommending many of those kinds of parameters or guidelines, right? Encourage new buildings to be, to be highly efficient, promote energy efficiency in existing buildings, promote the responsible development of, of solar energy, discourage natural gas. I, I would think that some of those items will likely come out of any developmental guidelines, I would think.
Did, did we talk about one oh three?
Not yet, no.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Comment one oh three?
Yeah, comment one oh three.
Yeah, this is up top of page twenty. This is, again, the Open Space Committee is telling us what to recommend for affordable housing policies in terms of deleting use of town-owned properties, and don't suggest increasing the allowable height of buildings, and I, that, that's, I mean, it's zoning issue, not an open space.
Yeah, that's not, that's.
So I just, I felt.
I just want to throw out, I said there were two issues.
Thank you.
You already put the other issue in there.
Okay. So, hang on a second, I just didn't want to miss anything here. Top of page twenty-one, comment one eleven, I just, there, this is a suggestion to go into the sustainability section about ecologically smart choices for designed landscapes, and I thought that the focus of the chapter on sustainability and resiliency was slightly different, but that this text would actually work back in ambiance in other places, so changes were made elsewhere, so here I said no change, because I don't think it should go here in this, in this chapter, but I think elements have been carried over. And I recognize, when the Open Space Committee worked as hard as they did on this report, they had not seen the revised draft.
Right.
So we, we kind of had two logs that I think have separated, need to come back together again, so I think.
Yeah.
Gosh, I think I'm way, I'm way ahead now.
Yep.
I'm pretty much at the end. So again, I think most of the other comments were changes that already came in, there were some mapping glitches that got caught by the Open Space Committee, so thank you very much for those, I believe we corrected all of those in the, in the new draft, in terms of the open space comments, et cetera. Some of the requests that action steps for landscaping or other things like that, to go in the sustainability or other sections, again, got, got put into the plan in other So I think, unless there's anything else that the commission has, I feel like I understand your marching orders to prepare the draft.
Oh, gosh.
And I will work with George to get it together, so that next week, this will be distributed and be a sixty-five day, sixty-five day deadline, and head for the public hearing in October.
Yeah, so I guess the question we were asking is, are you comfortable with Glenn making the changes discussed tonight and moving the document with those changes to a public hearing, without you seeing it before it gets on the street? That's, that's really the question. Because there's really no time.
You can make these change, I mean, that's a lot.
Did we announce them next week? Yes.
So, so we can make those changes.
Okay.
So I think, as I indicated earlier, there'll be two versions of the plan, everything in here that showed up is red for, for you, for this meeting, for tonight, will go to black. The only things that will now show up in the next red line version are the changes as a result of this document. If somebody wants to figure out the genealogy of what happened with the plan, George has all the copies of the plan on file, and the red lines are iterative, they can figure it all out. But I think now the black line would be clearly stated for the community what the plan is about, for people who have followed along in the process, you don't have to read every word and try to figure out what changed, it'll be pointed out clearly as, as to what happens, and we'll get all of that together by next week to hit the statutory deadline for October. As you may recall, we talked about doing our prioritization exercise, so made some vacation plans, so that may get interrupted, but I think we've got September and October to kind of get that done, and pretty much on all of these pages of the plan related to policies and action steps, these yellow columns will not be yellow, those will get cleaned up, if you will, and the priorities will end up in there, and that'll be done by the October twenty-fourth public hearing day, and so the commission could consider this and say, do we want to do this or not, but that date will be ready by that time.
Couple of questions, so would you need to meet with us before the public hearing on the twenty-fourth, for any reason?
I think, as Bill stated earlier, the right way to do this is, we'll kind of do an exhibit list.
Yep.
The document is essentially fixed, there may be some submittals that would come in to you from the community, and I think my intention would be to try to get the prioritization results to you beforehand, so as we go into the public hearing, everything is available for everybody to see, there's nothing that's, no secret exhibit or anything else that's going to show up.
But we would make no changes.
Correct.
No changes for that sixty-five day period.
Correct.
If comments came in, I would report out those comments as part of the exhibits the night of the public hearing.
Yep.
And, and we'd provide it to you in a packet, of course.
Yeah, that makes sense, all right. Question I have about the implementation, so once this plan gets ratified, accepted, whatever, when, because I, I, I need to wrap my head around the implementation committee, because I think that's going to be key, I mean, we've talked a lot about that, do you have a sense of what that would look like after the plan is finalized?
Yeah, so I think there's two thoughts that George and I have talked about on this, one of which is a prioritization exercise, where we're going to identify, I mean, at this point in time, let's just say, for example, that the strategies or the policies or action steps are flat, they all look the same, you don't know which one is more important than another one, but when we get the boards and commissions involved in sort of identifying, I, you know, think this is a number one priority, et cetera, we'll now start to be able to say, these are the things we think we should be focusing on. So we're going to try to, it doesn't mean that you can't take something that's a little bit further down the list, because the phraseology is sometimes there's low hanging fruit, and that's actually a good way to get momentum and stuff started on the POC day. So it's meant to be an assistant to implementation, but not to dictate implementation. The second thing is, while we have presented this material in the plan here as a PDF, like flat, a Word document, I've explained to George I'll be preparing an Excel spreadsheet, which is now sortable, so if you said, well, which of these strategies include the Board of Selectmen? Boop. Oh, let's sort those by priority. Boop. Okay, all right, so that's what we, and, and so the committee for implementation could now use that as a tool to figure out how to interact with other boards to get moving on implementation. I mean, the whole reason we plan this for implementation, so if we don't get started, you know, we're not going to accomplish the things that we could. Policies are meant to be things which are guidelines for when we review things that come to us, does it, is it consistent with our policies or not? But action steps are things like, change the regulations to do this, and so, and say to, people say to us, is the plan implemented? Did you, did you implement the prior plan? Policies are never implemented, you continue to, to use them over time, but action steps are. You say, well, we didn't, we didn't adopt any action steps, we didn't do anything. Then don't bother listing them, if you're not going to do them. So I think that would be our, our sense of moving forward, as you know, there are some changes coming in some of the boards, so I think the idea would be to kind of get the plan set up with an implementation tools available, and then as new boards find their, their pace and so on, to, to help with that.
Because we want representation from other boards on that implementation committee, it's not just people from planning.
I think that, over the years, the most effective plans I've seen are the ones that people are involved and are sitting around a table, talking about, you know, maybe the budget might have a little extra room in it.
Yep.
And so what, what could we do if, if additional funds were available, or the budget's tight, what can we do without any funding? What, what can we accomplish? Or, you know, even scenarios of regulation changes, maybe a small group of three, four, or five regulation changes, that boom, 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 get them done. George and I were talking about some of the little neighborhood studies for like Tariffill or We Talk, things that could perhaps be done, existing staff with unavailable resources types of things, so that's where the guides can come, and that would be, I think, the goal of implementation.
So what do people think about adopting the plan with the changes we talked about? Are people comfortable with that?
I'm totally comfortable with it.
I did put a draft motion just together for you, it's on your, it's in front of you.
Holly, you want to go?
Oh. I move that the Planning Commission schedule a public hearing on the draft twenty-twenty-three Plan of Conservation and Development, also known as a POCD, for Tuesday, October twenty-fourth at seven PM, at the Town of Simsbury Library, seven twenty-five Hop Meadow Street. Town planning staff is directed pursuant to CGS eight dash two-three to transmit the draft POCD dated August first, the one that we had redlined today, which won't have redlines on it, revised with changes directed on August eighth, two thousand twenty-three by the commission to the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and the Capital Region Council of Governments. The draft POCD shall also be posted on the Town website.
Second.
Any discussion, anybody? Nope. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn, this was, this was as heavy of a lift, if not heavier, than the last one.
It kind of felt like deja vu all over again. I didn't want to just deal with the new draft, because we'd already talked about, so I had to do both, and there were subtle differences, so, yeah, I think.
We bowed down to you.
I bow down to you, you guys are doing all the work.
You've done an incredible job, and it was more than, well, I think all of us envisioned when we first started, so.
We kind of did a bait and switch on you here.
And thank you to George and his staff, because they, they carried a big load, and when they weren't even fully staffed when we started this, so thank you, George, to your staff, you and your staff. All right, so I think that's, George, anything else before?
Nothing else on your agenda.
All right, so without objection, I will adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-one.